Good evening and welcome to the Village Board meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, June 26. If you're watching live on Monday, June 26, we encourage you to call in if you have comments or questions. Our call-in number is not on this agenda. What is our seven? I read it every week. Hold it. I'll pull up a previous agenda.
Give him Shane's home number.
I'll pull up a previous agenda.
Seven, six, nine, one, six, seven, seven.
All right, there you go. Seven, six, nine, one, six, seven, seven is our number if you'd like to call in with comments or questions. Our next scheduled meeting is two weeks from today, Monday, July 10, at 8:00 p.m. with a work session at 7:00. We have a bunch of announcements, but let's hold them for a moment and do the next segment because I know some folks are here about that. We received, this is regarding the application for Sunrise Senior Living for a proposed senior living facility at the site of the Pleasantville Methodist Church, 70 Bedford Road, which would require a zoning change. There's been much discussion about that in recent weeks. We received on June 23 the following letter from Shamberg, Marwell, Hollis, and Graysek and Laydellaw, signed by Dan Hollis, attorney for Sunrise. Dear Mayor Shearer and the members of the Village Board of Trustees, as a follow-up to my letter to you of June 20, 2017, please be advised that the undersigned as council of record for Sunrise Senior Living, Inc. petitioner hereby withdraws without prejudice the petition currently pending before your board with regard to text amendments to your village's zoning ordinance to permit the construction and operation of an assisted living facility on the above referenced parcel. As stated, this withdrawal is without prejudice and with the full intention on the part of Sunrise to resubmit a petition with a revised plan and amended language for the proposed assisted living facility after taking into account the comments of the Village Board and both opponents and supporters of the current petition and plan. I thank you and your board for the courtesies extended so far. We look forward to appearing before your board again in the not-too-distant future. Respectfully submitted, P. Daniel Hollis, III. So, we received that letter, the summary of which, as you have just heard, is that Sunrise has withdrawn the current petition and visions of coming back in the not-too-distant future with some sort of a modification. As yet, we have no idea what that may be, but as of the receipt of this letter, June 23, the matter is no longer before us pending a proposed resubmission. So if anyone has anything they wanted to say on that subject, I'm not sure there's anything to say at the moment, but if someone wanted to comment on that, please do so now. Won't burden you with the rest of this meeting if you're here on that purpose. All right, no takers. So we will obviously let you know when a new proposal is submitted. And again, for those of you who are not already on our Village Board Agenda email, if you go to pleasantville-ny.gov and subscribe to news, you have an opportunity to check off the kinds of news you would like to get and get it sent to you in your email automatically. That has the advantage of automatically sending you the agendas for the Village Board or the Planning Commission, the Zoning Board, Architectural Review Board, and if it's of interest to you, you'll be sure to know what's coming up. If not, you can just click Delete. So again, I encourage everybody to sign up for that. Pleasantville-ny.gov, subscribe to news in the left-hand column. A bunch of announcements to make. The first of which is there is a raft of activity coming up at the Pleasantville Pool, which is opened and I think is going along well. We have a new concession operator, the folks at Good2Go who have recently opened here on Bedford Road, just across the way from Jean Jacques. They are now operating a much expanded food concession at the Pleasantville Pool with a much expanded menu. I think a home run for everybody and an opportunity for people to enjoy the day and enjoy the food at the Pleasantville Pool. There are a bunch of activities coming up, including a 4th of July pool party with a DJ. That's a members-only activity. But on Thursday, July 6, at 6:00 to 8:30, there's a splash party for kids who are entering the 5th and 6th grade. It's a $10 fee, including pizza, drink, and a snack, and no pool membership or pre-registration is necessary for that. So it's a good opportunity, if you haven't joined the pool, and have a child entering 5th or 6th grade, to have an opportunity to see what's going at the pool. There are storytime activities planned that are run along with the Recreation Department and the Mount Pleasant Library, so lots of good stuff happening up at the pool, which leads me to the duck race.
Yes, we had the, I believe, 6th Annual Running of the Ducks on Sunday. It was a huge success. We had a lot of people come out. Ducks needed a little help from the Pleasantville Fire Department, which we're very happy to receive. A truck full of water, clean water, went into the river. All ducks were recovered.
Otherwise ducks would've run aground, isn't it?
Some of them got stuck, but we always made the pledge, we leave no duck behind. And no duck was left behind. We had prizes for obviously winning ducks, but also we had upside-down duck, we had backwards duck, we had best dressed duck, we had all this, and all this goes to benefit the Pleasantville swim team. So many thanks for everybody who came out. We had a lot of fun. Thanks for supporting the swim team. And a big shout-out to everybody on the swim team board who puts this thing together every year. I kind of just show up and talk into the microphone and leave. So they really made this into quite an event every year and look forward to continue doing it.
Thank you for that. We're a little less than two weeks and counting to the July 8 13th Annual Pleasantville Music Festival. A great lineup of bands. The three headliners that close the night are Suzanne Vega, Living Color, and Blues Traveler, so get yourselves to pleasantvillmusicfestival.com and read all about it. There are links to buy tickets online. That is highly recommended to avoid standing in line. It's really a great, great day. So pleasantvillmusicfestival.com. We are coming up on the music festival, which is Saturday, July 8. Farm Market's rocking outside and has the happy news that for the fourth consecutive year, it has been named Best of Westchester in the Farm Market category. So congratulations to the entire Farm Market Board. Peter Rogvin aboard, Steve Bates, the Executive Director, have all done a bang-up job, and thanks in particular to all the vendors who have put their roots down in Pleasantville, literally and figuratively, and have made that such a successful thing. So happy news on that front. Also wanted to point out that the Pleasantville Community Garden in the side yard at St. John's has a goal this year to donate 18,000 pounds of fresh food. They have already donated 7,000, but they are looking for anybody who might want to help and volunteer, and they also are available on the web. And there is a Garden Helper signup. Let me click into it and I'll tell you the link. That link takes you to signup, genius. So the Pleasantville, that won't be a helpful link. So if you Google Pleasantville Community Gardens, you can get to all the information and also get to the volunteer program. So it's a fantastic thing, great, great work being done. And a shout-out again to Devon Juroz, the young man who, along with his family, have been the engine behind that. Devon was recently honored at the volunteers, at a volunteers group for his extraordinary service, so thank you so much, Devon, and the Juroz family, and get yourself to the community garden and take a look at what's going on. Lastly, and this is an issue every year, our recycling center will be closed two weeks from Saturday for the music festival. So Saturday, July 8, you cannot go down Village Lane and drop off your recyclables. We are sincerely sorry for that inconvenience, but it is just too difficult to manage the 8 million things that are going on for the music festival and control of access to the parking and all of that. So the recycling center will be closed Saturday, July 8. Patty, if we could blast that out in an email as well to try to get to as many folks as we possibly can. Anybody else have other announcements? So the next thing on our agenda is a public hearing regarding proposed zoning amendments in the A1 zoning district. Is there a motion to open the public hearing on the proposed A1 zoning?
So moved.
Second?
Plaid.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome to the public hearing. I introduce Susan Favate of BFJ Planning. Susan has been a key player for us in the development of the master plan, and the zoning text amendments that are under discussion tonight arise out of the decision-making and the directions that arose in the master plan. So I leave it to Susan to walk everybody through what's under discussion tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. For those of you who were involved or participated in the master plan process last year, a lot of this should be a little bit of a recap, but I wanted to make sure that we spent a few minutes at least talking about the background here and the process that we've taken so far. Just a little bit of the background. Last year, back in 2016, the village undertook and largely completed a master plan update with a focus on the downtown area. It was village-wide, but many of the recommendations were highlighted with the downtown area in particular, including the zoning recommendations. There were some village-wide, but most of them pertained in particular to the downtown revitalization initiative. The plan was adopted actually in January of this year. In February, the Village Board started pretty much immediately on some of the zoning provisions that were intended to implement the master plan recommendations. And I'm going to go through basically what the master plan proposed and then what the zoning is, and then you'll see in many cases, it's pretty much identical. We have met regularly with the Village Board, I think about five times, to continue to refine these provisions and think about what it means. And so there are some adjustments from the plan, but I think everything is certainly consistent with the master plan and in many cases, as I said, identical. So the first set of recommendations from the master plan dealt with the uses in the downtown area. And one of the key recommendations of the master plan was to allow multifamily residential as-of-right, so no special permit required, in the A1 zone. The proposed zoning is pretty much similar to that with a little bit of caveat. Multifamily is allowed under the proposed zoning as-of-right on the upper stories. We had a lot of discussion with the Village Board about this, and the feeling was that we wanted to continue to promote an active ground floor with retail, restaurant, personal services, those types of uses that are indicative of an active downtown, a pedestrian-oriented downtown. So the feeling was that we didn't want to see a lot of multifamily residential on the ground floor. So where it is proposed on the ground floor, that would remain subject to a special permit. And one of the provisions of that special permit is that the first 50 feet in depth of the frontage along primary road frontage needs to be one of those active uses, retail, restaurant, personal service, recreation, not office, but it needs to be something that's really oriented toward the street. Another, I think fairly minor change, was under your existing zoning, affordable units were allowed on the ground floor, and the Board discussed that a little bit, distinguished between affordable and market rate in terms of where you put them in the building. So the feeling was that all residential uses should be really on the upper floors except by special permits. So basically, this would just treat affordable units the same as market rate units in terms of where they go on the stories.
So Susan, you said this, but just to put a point on it, multifamily residential has always been permitted, or in the current zoning is permitted in the A1, but by special permit.
Right.
And the change here is to remove the special permit requirement.
For the upper stories.
Right.
Yep. Okay. Area and bulk. This was again, one of the key recommendations of the master plan. The recommendation was in a certain area, which I think is highlighted, if you can see it on that map, the darker purple that's got a hatch line around it, that, and that was considered sort of the Phase 1, that where you have some separation from neighborhoods, from residential, single-family neighborhoods, and you're separated from those by either a road or a railroad, and you have 150-foot depth, the recommendation from the master plan was to allow up to four stories in height in the A1. Recommendation was to not change, but keep the FAR, the floor area ratio, at 2.0, which is where it currently is. And the final recommendation was to reduce the land area per unit, which, under your existing zoning, is a graduated scale, but to reduce it so it's across the board, 500-foot square foot minimum land area per unit, which that, under your existing zoning, we really identified as a key barrier to redevelopment downtown. So those are the master plan recommendations.
So just to help folks out who may be watching at home or have trouble with the map, the area in question, which is proposed to have a height increase to allow four stories, is the area bounded by Memorial Plaza, Manville Road, Cooley Street.
And Bedford.
And Bedford Road.
Right.
So it's essentially the area that incorporates the post office, the Valvoline, the diner, the row of stores on Bedford that faces Manville, and it does not include Wheeler, Washington, or areas down Marble.
Correct. And if any of you recall from the master plan process, the feeling was that this would be where it would make the most sense to look at a higher height. Memorial Plaza is extremely wide in comparison to the other streets. Certainly Wheeler is quite narrow relative to Memorial Plaza. The feeling was that this would be an ideal location to have a higher height, particularly since it's not a budding residential, a single-family residential neighborhood. It has some separation. So this is where the plan recommended, if you're going to look at higher building heights, this is where you should get started.
Susan, real quick on that. Would we, in the text itself, would we delineate between Phase 1 and A1 in general?
The...
Because what we're really talking about is Phase 1 being in that darker purple hatch, but the rest of the text speaks about this change for A1 in general.
In the proposed text, which is this slide, it specifies that it's only in that area bounded by Cooley, Manville, Bedford, and Memorial Plaza.
So then the future Board, or this Board, whatever we want, they would then choose proactively to expand that phase further?
Correct. I mean, you could always expand into the future, but right now, it's very specific. It makes reference to this particular figure in the master plan, and it also calls out the streets by name that bound this area.
Okay.
So it's very clear, it's only basically in this block.
In that Phase 1 area.
Right, that's the only place.
And again, for the benefit of folks who may not have followed the master plan process, that pretty well tracked the kind of level of consensus that existed about the idea of going from the existing three-story max in most of our A1 to four stories, with most folks, dare say almost all folks, a feeling as though the zone that's identified here, that, for lack of a better word, the post office zone, was a logical place to do that and one that didn't have significant impacts that were concerning other neighborhoods. There was much less consensus about that as a possibility on one side or the other of Washington, and likewise, some concerns about Wheeler. So that is what led to this. The reason it's called Phase 1 is not that a Phase 2 or 3 is necessarily written in the stars, but that it was proposed as the piece that generated wide agreement.
Correct. And it may be that the Board adopts this, and this is Phase 1, and that's all that it ever is, that you think that that's enough. So this is what the current proposed zoning specifies, that in this limited area, the maximum height would be four stories or 48 feet. The FAR, as consistent with the master plan, would stay at 2.0. There are some incentives, which I'll get to in the next slide, which would basically provide a little bit of carrots for the developer. When the developer provides something, provides a benefit to the village, they get a bit of a bonus, and I'll go through that in a moment. The land area per unit has been reduced under the proposed zoning to 500 square feet per unit, as consistent with the master plan. Again, there's some incentives that can reduce that slightly, which I'll get to right now.
Phil, sorry to interrupt again, but another point to be made about this is that one of the issues we confronted in crafting this with BFJ was the requirement and expectation that folks provide onsite parking for the properties they build. And we're very much hoping to avoid a circumstance where we end up with a big asphalt parking lot in front of some building, and instead are hopeful that, at least on some sites, it will be possible to knit parking underneath behind whatever, a new structure. And so doing that with a three-story building is extremely difficult as an economic matter. A four-story building may loosen that noose a little bit, and that also goes to the reasoning. Sorry?
No, that's a good point. You know, we spent a lot of time with the Board talking about crafting zoning that would actually make something happen. The last thing you want to do is undertake a set of zoning revisions, and then it just sits there, and nobody ever takes advantage of this increased development opportunity. So we wanted to make sure to strike that balance between, obviously protecting the scale that everybody loves about Pleasantville, providing something that is attractive enough for a developer to actually take advantage of it. And so it's on a limited scale in terms of where it can be located, but this is what the proposed zoning gets at. And so when we were talking about incentives, we spent a lot of time with the Village Board talking about this. And we looked at a few, really as a way to make sure that the developer can actually maximize their FAR. Right now, the situation is, I think the Board is aware and the public may be aware, is that you have an FAR of two, no one can ever reach that FAR because of various aspects, one of them being the minimum land area per unit requirement, but also parking and various other area and bulk provisions.
Can you explain floor area ratio? Some folks may not be aware.
Yeah, basically, it's a measure of bulk, where it's a number, where you multiply times the lot area, and you get how much square footage can go into a building. So you have your height, and you have your setbacks, and the FAR, that floor area ratio, tells you how much square footage you can put in that building envelope. So the simplest way is if you have 10,000-square-foot lot and you have a floor area ratio of one, that means you can have 10,000 square feet in the building. You can distribute that over one story, two stories, three stories, whatever the building height is, but obviously you have to meet your setbacks and you have to provide your parking. So it's one limitation on development. It's not the only one, but it's one that developers are quite familiar with, that really has an impact on sort of how bulky your buildings can be.
Presently, and under the proposed zoning, it's proposed to stay floor area ratio at two, which means if you had a 10,000-square-foot lot, you could build 20,000 square feet of floor area.
Correct.
That's under current zoning.
Yep.
And it remains the same under this proposed new zoning. So why is it, perhaps you can explain why those other things impacted, why people, developers, could not achieve their full two, you know, 2.0 floor area ratio?
Right. Well, one of them is building height, and I think that's a key one. Under the current three stories, where you have to provide your parking onsite and you have to meet your setbacks, there's just not enough room on the site over just two stories or three stories to meet that FAR. Another one is the land area per unit, where you just can't put that many units on, and so it just generates different parking requirements and setback issues. So we found that there were just upper limits in your current zoning that means that it can't really be achieved unless you had a perfect site, perhaps, you know, big, the ability to do some parking perhaps underground. It's just not, it's not a number that tends to work out under your current zoning. So we looked at different ways to incentivize developers to basically give the village what it would like in terms of the scale of development, the amenities, public improvements. And one of the things that, the first few deal with FAR, floor area ratio, but the first one is, again, to really promote that active street-level environment, allowing the Planning Commission to exempt that active ground-level floor space, whether it's retail, restaurants, personal service, recreation, or a similar type of a use, allow that portion of the building to be exempted from floor area. It amounts to a bit of an FAR bonus. Similarly, where a site abuts municipally-owned land, and you have a few of those around here, and the property owner agrees to make a portion of that village-owned land open and available for open space that's open to the public, basically even though the village retains ownership, the property owner would agree to maintain that area, and that portion that's actually village-owned could count toward lot area for the purposes of FAR. So again, it creates a bit of a bonus, but in exchange, the developer maintains and maintains open access as well to the public, to that area. So it's an amenity that is available not only to the residents or users of that building, but to all of village residents. The last FAR bonus is the proposed zoning has a whole set of design guidelines, which apply to the A1 and are meant to give you a little bit more control over the type of development you get, not mandate a particular style or materials or something that's cookie-cutter, because that's definitely something we heard during the master plan process, was people wanted the village to retain its eclectic style, retain some creativity in terms of what people could do, signage, different types of materials. People kind of like that about Pleasantville, that it is, you know, an interesting range of old and new. And so these design guidelines essentially allow that, but give you a little bit of parameter in terms of windows and scale and design, not really dictating materials, but making sure that the quality is very high in terms of what you'll get. And we've gone over this with the Village Board, and the building inspectors looked at it as well. And the feeling is that, you know, any architect worth their salt can fairly easily meet these design guidelines, but they're also not so loose that you could just draw something on the back of a napkin and get your bonus. So they're meant to, again, strike that balance of making sure that the village is getting something in return, but not being onerous to create an actual incentive. So those are the FAR bonuses. And when we got into the numbers and we looked at this, we found that if you were to use these FAR bonuses and, you know, in combination, basically achieve a little higher FAR, then what becomes the limiting factor is that land area per unit. And so the feeling was that we could go a little bit lower than 500, so 425 per square feet, only if they need that in order to actually meet their incentives, to be able to achieve their incentives. So that's a fairly narrow case, where you're, you know, you're taking advantage of all these FAR incentives, but you wouldn't be able to actually use them because of this land area requirement. You can go down to 425 per unit. And then we also, we spent a little bit of time on the last one. You know, we're hearing more and more from the development community in downtowns like Pleasantville, there is this desire in new construction to have a little bit higher first floor, particularly with restaurant-type uses, but there are also other uses where a higher ceiling is appropriate and desired for kind of a higher-end building. And so we wanted to give a little bit of wiggle room in terms of the building height. And so on Memorial Plaza, which again is a fairly wide street, so the feeling was that here was a place that could handle just a little bit more height, we would allow under the proposed zoning to go up to 52 feet, which is four feet higher than the 48 feet under the overall proposed zoning. But in no case would the number of stories change. So it would still be four stories max. They could go a little bit higher, four feet higher, if they wanted to achieve, you know, a higher first floor. So those are the incentives. Any questions about those?
I just wanted to add to that, as you have already said, that when you weed through the thicket of text in our current zoning law, there are lots of things that lots of us, or I think in the master plan process, a consensus of community members would like to see happen that can't happen under the current zoning. It all seems perfectly reasonable, but when you line up the various requirements, one or another of them becomes the chokehold on a given site, and the result of that is it's been difficult to encourage developers to redevelop lots that have been in decline or even in some cases vacant. And it's been doubly difficult to imagine a redevelopment that would incorporate onsite parking. So all of those things have meant that a lot of stuff has been sort of locked in stasis. And what we have sought, as Susan has described, is to find a way to create reasonable, logical controls and then to provide these incentives that would give the village a hand in the crafting of a project, so that if someone comes forward and is actually trying to achieve the very goals we seek, walkability, onsite parking, the streetscape and design guidelines that we would be looking for, and the general quality of building that is going to give you some of these bonuses, that it would be an opportunity for us to have some flexibility to work with somebody. And conversely, if someone comes forward with something that feels like it's not the right thing, they may not qualify for these bonuses.
Right. And I just want to reiterate on the last point about the height. Now, again, this would only be in that hatched-out area where you could even have 48 feet. You know, we're not talking about 48 feet anywhere else in the A1 zone, and so with this 52 feet is within that small area, only if you're fronting Memorial Plaza. So it's a very limited area that we're talking about here.
And the onsite parking requirement, as you all see, the project at the former Tryon By site is now being built right now, and that is a parcel big enough to accommodate the onsite parking requirements, and of course, is being entirely rebuilt. We have some sites, obviously, on the post office side of Memorial Plaza that might fall into the same category. We have a bunch of narrow properties on Wheeler or Washington where it is hard to imagine that anybody could accommodate the onsite parking requirements, and that's a different problem and a different challenge and one that is yet to be resolved.
Right. So it's a good segue to parking. This is, this slide is the master plan of recreations, recommendations, excuse me, and the ratios suggested here are the ones that ultimately are proposed, that they have not changed. So going down to one space for a studio or one bedroom, 1.5 for a two-bedroom, and two spaces for three or more. And what we found when we started looking at the parking is you actually had higher, more stringent parking requirements in your downtown than you did for townhome development elsewhere in the village, which was a real disincentive to residential development. which was a real disincentive to residential development in downtown, among the other disincentives, but parking was clearly one of them. So in the A1 zone, which is clearly a transit-oriented development zone, a TOD, our feeling was that you could go down, that these ratios are very consistent with what we see in similar TOD areas throughout Westchester, and we've seen them work very well. So this is, again, the master plan recommendation. Another recommendation would actually go the other way, in terms of tightening up the parking. You know, currently, not just in A1, but in several other zones, really all of your business zones, the planning commission has the ability to waive any or all of the parking requirements. It's not, it's not really limited, it's a case-by-case basis. Now, my sense is, and I think, I think I've heard this, that they have not really done that, but nevertheless, the ability is there. So we felt that you really should, you should have some level of control over that. So one of the suggestions in the master plan was, basically as a way to give, give a break to the smaller lot, the smaller building, continue to allow, to give that ability to the planning board to waive parking, but for larger lots, over 5,000 square feet, to only allow the waiver to be up to half. And anything beyond that would be subject to an INLU parking fee, so the village could start to get some, some revenue toward perhaps providing additional parking in the future. When it came to coming up with the proposed zoning, as I said, the ratios are exactly what was proposed in the conference, the master plan, that has not changed. But when we, we talked about the parking waiver with the village board, there was some concern, you know, kind of about giving away the store and allowing so much to be waived without getting something in return in terms of a fee, you know, creating kind of a parking problem. Now, again, this, this ability exists in your current zoning, so we're suggesting tightening it up. So what we've come down to with the proposed zoning is that for those smaller lots, that you could waive up to half, as is, as was previously proposed in the plan, but beyond that, those are subject to an INLU fee. But for all other lots, the larger lots, any waiver is subject to an INLU fee. So that really ensures that when, when the village gives a break on the parking, it again gets something in return that is meant, the INLU fee is meant to try to provide that parking at some future date, so to start to get a parking revenue that could address your parking issues.
And on that point, A, we have to determine how much that fee is going to be. It's not part of this.
It's not part of this.
It's not part of this law, so at the moment, the fee would be zero. If we adopted it today, it would be zero, because we don't have adopted it. So we'd have to figure out what the right number is. And also, talk about how we're going to utilize that money. There are concepts, not exactly plans, but concepts of where we can make parking improvements in the village. The village can do that, to provide more spaces. But of course, that all costs money, and there's going to be probably bonding involved with some of that build-out and so on. There's, there's debt service, and there's ways to pay for it. So that's what this fee INLU would go for, lest anybody think that it's just a way of, you know, the village just grabbing money for nothing. We're not, what we want to do is, is if we're not providing a parking space, provide some money so that we can, the village can then use that money to provide a parking space.
Right. And it's a good point, that the INLU fees have to go into a dedicated fund that's specifically devoted for parking improvements. It can't go into the general fund, so it ends up paying for something else. It's meant to only be for providing new parking or improving existing parking to make it work better, to expand the capacity in some way, to basically acknowledge the fact that they're not providing their own parking. They need to rely on, on other sources of parking. So over time, yes, it is meant to defray costs of providing perhaps a new, new parking lot, even a parking structure. The, the INLU fees alone, and we talked about this, are most likely not going to be enough to create that type of significant parking. As you said, you may have to look at bonding or other, other sources of funding, but it is an additional source that could allow you, you know, some funds for that purpose. And yes, the, the fee would have to be determined, the amount, and it's imposed by the board of trustees, and it would have to be updated periodically, so that you'd be sure you're keeping up to date with costs. So that is parking. And then the, the building inspector, I guess while, while we were doing this, he said, oh, you know, there's a lot of items that he has on his list that are really more housekeeping and cleanup items. And it should be clear that these are not necessarily only in the A1. They may apply, in case the definitions they apply village-wide. I'm not going to go through in detail, because they are very detailed, but essentially, he has suggested some revisions to existing definitions, a few new definitions. And in many cases, most cases, these are meant to, to really provide clarification and be consistent with state building codes, make things a little bit more clear, just issues that he's seen come up throughout, throughout the development process, dealing with some obsolete definitions like quick-printing establishment. It's not really something that we would see used anymore. Looking at some, some parking and structures in yards, accessory structures. So, you know, pretty detailed, again, but minor housekeeping items. The feeling was, while, while we're doing this, let's go ahead and take care of these things. There were a few other items on his list that we said, you know, those need a little bit more discussion, let's, let's hold off on those, because we didn't want to delay things. But there, there's a number of, of pretty minor revisions that are all in, in the proposed zoning, which is on the village's website. So in terms of next steps, we're looking forward to hearing from the public tonight, hearing both verbally and written. We are working on the secret process. You have a, an EAF Part One that you needed to do in order to declare yourselves lead agency. We've heard from the county, they, they gave us a great letter. They basically said, all the proposed zoning is consistent with the county's planning policies, which was really good to hear. So once we hear from the public, and once we, we meet again with the board of trustees, we'll look at what revisions might need to, need to take place to respond to those comments, and then be in position to adopt the proposed zoning. So if there are no more questions from the board, I suggest opening it to the public.
Great. I thank you for that, Susan.
Thank you, Susan.
Good and thorough report. And a shout-out to the community, and to the folks at BFJ, and to all of those involved here on the board. Couple of weeks ago, we attended the Westchester Municipal Planning Federation Awards Dinner, when the Pleasantville Master Plan, led by the folks at BFJ and by Susan herself, was awarded a citation of merit. So that was a happy event, and we thank you for your good service. So comments, questions are welcome. Come on up. If you have comments or questions, just identify yourself and give us your address, even if we already know it. Come on, Roger.
I read the document, it was very well done.
All right, hold on, you gotta go to the mic.
I was impressed with--
Hold on, stop. Getting ahead of yourself.
So I was very--
All right, you gotta say who you are and where you're--
I'm Roger Pollak, I live at 12 Grove Street.
Okay, thank you.
And I was very impressed with the way this document was written. It was a level of complexity that I rarely see in documents of this kind, so it was very well done. That said, I have a few suggested changes. I know one of them you will make, and the other two, I hope you'll make. First, in the table at the end, it's not really clear, I was confused. This is the bulk requirements table, the second to last page. I really think it'd be very important to specify a special A1 district, just to clarify the difference between Memorial Plaza and the rest of the A1s, because it is confusing when you read the footnotes in this table. And I think that it says, "Building height may be further increased at the planning commission's discretion." I think that should be removed, that statement, because why have a thing if you're going to give them discretion to change it anyway?
Can I answer that, because it's a point of participation?
Sure.
Sure.
And I think there's a way to make that footnote a little bit clearer.
I think by making special, you know, A1, it might--
Where it says, so the footnote basically says what the maximum height in that sub-area of the A1 is, for four stories, 48 feet.
Yeah, but it says three or 36, so that's why I think you need two different districts.
That's the, that's the existing.
Right. No, this, this is a table through your--
Right. So the footnote, I'm sorry, the footnote is only for that sub-area, where you can go up to four or 48 feet. The last sentence of the footnote, which is what you were just saying, "Building height may be further increased at the planning commission's discretion." C-section makes a reference. What, that section says you can go up to 52 feet on Memorial Plaza, but only--
So I don't care how you do it, but you gotta clarify, there are two different zones. There's special A1 and there's A1.
Well, no, I think, I think the way this is written, the way I read it, correct me if I'm wrong, is there's the A1. And then, there are some exceptions for this specifically bounded area, Memorial Plaza, Manville Road, et cetera, that. And, which says, for example, one of the exceptions to the A1 zone is that it can, with the planning boards, in the planning with discretion, go up to 52 feet. And there are also some other incentives in that, specifically only in that zone. That's the way I, when I read it, that's the way I, I read it.
I agree with you, that's the way you interpret it. And that's the intent I heard from everybody here. And I agree with that. But if you read the document, and the unlikely possibility that real estate developer, because the head of government somewhere in our country, I don't think that'll ever happen.
No, kind of.
You know, they might read this differently. So I'm just thinking that--
You want the qualification that it's only up to 52 feet, that it's limited.
No, no, the qualification is that there are two zones, really. There's a special A1 and an A1. There are two different, two different areas. I can stand in one, and I can stand in the other. However you want to distinguish that, either by the verbs, the words here, or calling it special, I don't care.
Maybe it's another column in the table rather than a footnote. I see what you're saying.
So where do I footnote to?
So that's one comment. The other comment is, this is a trivial one. On the table itself, maximum height, stories and feet, it says three or 36. I would put three feet or 30, three stories or 36 feet right in the table, just to clarify. That's trivial. And now for the fun one. Anybody a pilot here? Anybody know how to fly a plane?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So what does balls to the wall mean?
As fast as you can go.
That means the stick, the throttle in an airplane has a ball on top of it, and you pull it all the way back till it hits--
I'm glad that's what it means.
Okay? Well, in this document here, it says we should avoid blank balls. So either we need to put a definition in the front of the document that says what blank balls are, I don't know what they are. Or we need to change it to blank balls.
Where are you, Roger?
It's supposed to be balls. So I was sure you would change that one.
Blank wall.
Avoiding any blank balls, except in areas of existing walls.
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
Or potential common practice.
Okay.
I knew you'd change that one, right? And then the last comment--
We owe you, Roger.
The last comment I have is, did the Architecture Review Board review all the incentives that you had? And did they agree with them? Because it's, it's the first, I applaud you, because it's the first definition of a streetscape in Pleasantville. To me, it's not my taste, but I, everybody has different tastes. So did the Architecture Review Board review your incentives? And if they haven't, I suggest that they review them and give you comments as well before we finalize.
And we certainly will refer to them, absolutely.
It's a good point. To my, to my understanding, it's been referred to the planning commission, correct?
Yes.
But it should be referred to the BAO.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Roger.
Thank you, Roger.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Steve Dusio, one of the owners at 76 Wheeler Avenue, right next door. First, I'd like to thank you guys for the work you're doing here. I think it's important to revise the zoning, to encourage appropriate development in the downtown. Pleasantville already has one of the most desirable downtowns in all of Westchester County, so I commend you guys for that. Looking at this briefly, just a couple of things kind of stand out to me. We're treating one area of the downtown differently than the other areas. And the qualifiers that we're using for that are not being applied across the board. What do I mean by that? You guys are saying that there's a special area, Memorial Plaza, which really only includes one side, and I understand you're trying to develop, do something with that parking lot that accomplishes many goals. But the properties on Wheeler as well are 150 feet or more from residential areas, or are segregated by train tracks. So in my opinion, that zone, if it's, that's going to be the delineation, the 150 or the railroad, should be expanded to appropriately include all properties that meet the criteria. Otherwise--
You mean for the increased height?
For the increased height. Otherwise, it looks like you're selecting an area to give special exception to, as opposed to the whole zone or using that criteria. So I would either expand the zone, or have different criteria on what area will have the increased height. If you're, if you're looking to craft a law that encourages developers to take action, I think that's a great thing to do. I think it needs to be realistic, which is generally what you're doing. Next door, we have the two buildings, Frank and Joe's and the Indian Restaurant. If those properties would have, God forbid, have a fire and be redeveloped, there's no way we could provide any onsite parking. We can't even get into the lot without going over the sidewalk. I don't think that would be desirable at all. Being bounded in the rear by the railroad really limits the properties on this side of Wheeler Avenue. That should be looked at. There's land behind my building, as an example, complete waste. It's a decent-sized area, but I can't get a car in there. I couldn't even get an excavator in there to remove an oil tank. It should be, it should be looked at in such a way that if there was a redevelopment opportunity, which you're only going to have one shot at, if there's a redevelopment opportunity, you're maximizing it. I think this side of Wheeler needs some special attention as well, because it poses particular challenges, but also opportunities. There's a lot of one-story buildings here, right across the street, as an example, which back in the 50s used to have a three-story building. A couple other here, the pharmacy is a great redevelopment opportunity, huge parcel. I think that this side of Wheeler really needs to be addressed as part of this, so that you can fully accomplish your goals. And frankly, the other side of Wheeler, too. There's a bunch of one-story buildings that, if there's a fire, right now, they can build a three-story, but if you want to take that opportunity to have them build a four-story, I'm sure the developers will kick in money for the parking fund. As far as getting to the, the FAR of two, I would not be able to accomplish that on either one of the properties next door, because of the story limitation. On three stories right next door, and the property is 5,000 square feet roughly, building 7,300, or less than, sorry, it's like 4,500. So it's, the two FAR is, is unachievable over here.
That is, you can't even get to that.
Not even close.
Well, and just for everybody's information, Steve, I've, I've done some legal work for Steve, so I want everybody just to, full disclosure, but it had nothing to do with anything to do with zoning or anything like that, but Steve and I know each other. But I'm just curious, when you say that, let's say one of your buildings did burn down, and you say there's a lot of land in the back. If you have a 5,000-square-foot lot, and you have an empty lot, because the, the building burned down, you should be able to buy, build a 10,000-square-foot, you know, two-story, 10,000-square-foot, or three-story, and achieve your 10,000-square-foot. Are you saying you don't think you can do that?
I don't, I don't think I can do that, no. I certainly wouldn't be able to provide any parking whatsoever. So that's, that's out of the question. But right now, if you look behind the lot next door, there's not a lot of land behind Frank and Joe's, but behind the Indian place, there is quite a bit.
Right.
That's pretty much maxed out, that lot. It might be a little less than five, I'm not sure off the top of my head, maybe it's, it's 3,500. Whatever it is, that's 7,000, the building is 4,500. I can't even get close to a FAR of two.
Which is an argument to change something, or it's just the reality?
To allow for a four-story, which would get me closer to that FAR of two.
So--
Do you have a rear, a rear yard setback, or something that you wouldn't be able to utilize the entire? And I'm talking about if the lot were vacant. I understand now, you can't get back there, you can't do anything, you can't build anything more now. But if the building, if the lot were vacant, I think you probably could build a two-FAR building, because you, you could utilize the whole lot, you know?
On the, on the one next door, then it won't--
So just, just by way of background, in the course of the master plan process, we looked at, and BFJ presented, a number of scenarios that would provide the same increase to four stories throughout the A1 with the setbacks for 150 feet around residences and the like. And that scenario potentially included both sides of Wheeler, but only the track side of Washington, not the opposite side, because it was too close to the residences.
They back up to residence.
Right. So there was substantial disagreement within the community about whether that was appropriate or not. And I don't mean to suggest unanimity, but relatively little disagreement about the appropriateness of it in the zone we have identified here. And so that led to this notion of taking this step, doesn't necessarily preclude a future step, but by no means assures it. future step, but by no means assures it. So that's how it came about, and that's why one area is treated differently from the others.
A lot of talk was, you know, one step at a time. Let's do one area, that's the most appropriate area. It's, you know, as Mayor said, most people agreed. And so do that and see how it works. If it looks good, if it works well, if it's not causing much trouble, then it might expand to, I don't know, Wheeler or something. But again, that would be a future board to decide.
The other underlying problem, which you've already referred to, is that nobody could accommodate onsite parking, certainly not on the track side of Wheeler. Perhaps with an accumulation of properties on the other side of Wheeler, it might be possible, but there isn't an opportunity like the one that's being spun out now at the former Try and Buy site. We have a big parcel and a relatively deep parcel in the capacity to deal with onsite parking. So as you probably know, we have rappled for years and have made incremental progress, but it's up against a rising tide to try to accommodate the parking requirements. And one of our problems with allowing residential development, say on Wheeler, which in many cases is a, is a result we would very much like to see, is that it generates parking requirements that we're unable to fulfill at the moment. And so we're, we're looking at various options, including the idea of parking a one-level deck on the lot behind Lucy's, that would add another potentially 50, 60, 70 spaces. But the cost of doing that far exceeds the revenue we could generate from it. You start to look at the new tax ratables that might be generated if somebody's able to build a building and offload their parking requirement to a municipal lot. If we had the supply, all those things become a complicated balance. But for the moment, it is difficult for us to imagine unleashing development without some corresponding increase in parking, so.
I would definitely, that's fine. I definitely respect, you know, the research you guys have done on it and input. I would definitely suggest looking at what you're using to delineate this area, because I could see some attorney down the road coming in and saying, well, these are the criteria to have this higher height. This property meets both of those criteria. While it's not specifically designated in that zone, it should, should have been. So I'd just, I'd just be careful with that, is all.
I mean, I don't think it's a legal problem. It's a conceptual problem. Would you agree? Right? I mean, we have the right to do this.
I also think, I also think just more on a, on a growth level, on the one hand, we need, we want to encourage more residential development. We need to keep pace with that, but we don't want to get ahead of it with parking. We don't want to spend millions and millions and millions of dollars on all kinds of parking all over the place and structures and so on without having, I mean, we're going to turn people off. People are not going to want to build here because they're going to have a parking garage. You don't want to do that either. So I'd have to, you know, do them in tandem, where we have private development going on and at the same time have village improvement and enlargement and increase of parking spaces so that they work together. And then, you know, maybe we get to the point where we go, okay, we've got enough parking between the Lucy's and maybe some other lots somewhere else, who knows where, to say, okay, now we can accommodate more residences with no parking onsite on Wheeler. Who knows? That's, I think it's something we have to grow into.
I just, I just see somebody coming in and saying, I'm going to file for a zoning map amendment to become part of the subzone, and may just catch you guys for something you didn't plan. That's just a suggestion.
Okay, understood. I mean, the other piece of that is that I think all of us are unanimous in our view that we need some new investment in downtown Pleasantville, and that some additional residential life downtown would benefit the downtown and all of us. By the same token, we're trying to keep Pleasantville Pleasantville, and so the incremental progress of this, I think, makes sense to a lot of us.
Thank you.
I just want to ask you a quick question. I'm curious what kind of development you would envision in the theoretical universe in which these restrictions were loosened for Wheeler. And I'm also curious about how you see the parking situation. How important parking spaces do you think are for those properties specifically?
Sure. What I see, the development for downtown, I'll use Austining as an example. They have like what I would consider the classic downtown, three and four-story buildings, apartments above, some commercial above, mostly apartments, and your downtown row. How would it, how would it change? I mean, you're going to, you're going to have your larger stories. The parking is a problem. It's become more and more of a problem, and it's going to continue to be a problem. I have tenants who come in, they say, what's the story with parking? I give them the story, they say, well, it's not for me. But I tell them, if you're going to be half a block to the train, you're going to expect parking to be tight. If you're going to be far away from the train, it's going to be easier to park. Most of them find their way. They'll get put on the waiting list for the parking, you know, Judy and everybody are very good trying to accommodate people. It's an issue. People are still moving here, they still like Pleasantville, but they know parking is tough. It does detract a little bit, but it's not, it's not a deal breaker generally.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Other comments? Anyone want to call in? 769-1677. I've got that.
Just do it a couple times, you'll get used to it.
All right. There being no further comment, can I suggest we close the public hearing but leave the written record open for another two weeks? Is that reasonable?
I just, I want to make a comment. I had a thought on something, and I don't know what all your thoughts might be. It's a brand-new issue. If we want to encourage some development, and we have an area that we're, by this proposal would be giving them more development rights, higher building and so on, if we want to encourage that, not just have it sit around and sit around and sit around, would we ever consider a sunset provision on that and say, hey, listen, if you're going to build it, build it, five years, seven years, something like that? If you're going to do it, do it. Otherwise, it's going to go away. That would encourage people to-
Are you referring to anything we were talking about in the current set of zoning changes?
I'm talking about the four-story, 48 or 52-foot-
As an incentive to get a move.
As an incentive. If you want to build it, build it, you know? It's all, it's just a thought.
So it's worth thinking about?
I know, it's a brand-new idea. I know. I just brought it up.
I mean, if we've gotten to a point where I think we feel pretty confident that-
I know.
-this zoning makes sense, and I'm not sure that you, there might be another way to create that incentive without suggesting that we're going to go back to where we started at the witching hour.
That's true.
All right, worth considering.
Just a thought.
All right, any other comments from the board or from the public? All right, is there a motion to close the public hearing but to leave the written record open for another two weeks until-
July 10.
July 10.
Submoved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, so the written record will remain open.
Here, Shane's got to change tapes.
Got to change tapes. Brief break. Welcome back. We had a brief break to change the tape and the video. So as you just saw, we've closed the public hearing, but the written record remains open until July 10. So any folks that have any comments or want to look further at the documents, they're available online at pleasantville-ny.gov, and you can use any of the links there to the members of the board, or probably best to Judy Wintrow, the Village Clerk, or to Patty Dwyer, to send an email or a letter or any of, any, any other form of written communication if you have a comment to make about the master plan. I thank you, Susan, for that thorough description.
Great. I was just telling Patty, we're working on the EAF Part II right now, which is looking at, you know, various impacts of the proposed zoning, and we'll get that to you this week, basically, and then we'll proceed from there.
Great.
Thank you.
I thought we were going to have a resolution to designate ourselves as the lead agency.
That's been done already.
We did that already.
I'm sorry.
Off my head.
But before you do decide to vote on this, whether it's going to be on July 10 or another date, you're going to need to have another SEQR resolution, which presumably would be a negative declaration.
Right.
Certainly not telling you or advising you, but I think that's the direction we're heading.
And you'll also refer to the BAR?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a storm of acronyms. BFJ is advising us about the FAR and-
Right.
K and B is advising us about the EAF and the SEQR.
Great.
Aside from that, it's all crystal clear.
Planers trying to show people how important they are.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Very much appreciated. So having gotten through those first two pieces of business, is there any comment from the public on any other subject? We'd be happy to hear it now. No takers. Now for the exciting part, the resolutions. Nicole, 105.
Four.
Four, sorry, thank you.
Right. Resolve that the pre-check register dated June 26, 2017 is hereby approved as listed below. For the fiscal year 2016-2017, to the general fund, $39,527.34. For the special purpose fund, $17,395. The water fund, $106,606.41. To the capital fund, $6,212.50. To the trust fund, $3,023. For a total of $172,764.25. For the fiscal year 2017-2018, in the general fund, $327,661.83. To the water fund, $31,258.09. To the refuse fund, $19,497.38. For a total of $378,417.30.
Is there a second?
Tag it.
Comments or questions about the check register?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Steve, 105.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves surplusing the following village equipment. So I'll just run these down quick. I'll give a brief description of the equipment and then the salvage value that we estimate, right, that we expect is at least in the range that we'll be able to get. So 2002 Ford Explorer, a range of $300 to $500. 2002 Ford Dump Truck, $3,000 to $4,500. 2005 Ford Crown Victoria, $500 to $1,500. 1993 Ford Backhoe, $2,000 to $3,000. 2001 Ford Super Duty Bus, $500 to $750. '07 Toyota Prius Hybrid, $2,500 to $4,000. There's two of those, one's an '07 and one is an '08. 2004 Dump Truck, $1,500 to $3,000. 2006 New Holland Loader, $8,000 to $10,000. A 2002 Gem Electric Car, $1,500 to $2,500. A directional 11-foot plow, $150 to $300. A Myers 11-foot plow, $250 to $4. A Canon Image Prograph, $1,500 to $2,000. Also a Hewlett-Packard Design Jet, $1,500 to $2,000. Kiosera printer, we're going to surplus for 50 bucks. A John Deere Gator for 800. SmithCo Field Maintainer bunker rake, 200 bucks. And then four assorted leaf blowers, each between 20 and 25 dollars. And finally, Orion Aerator for 150.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is all material advised to surplus by Jeff Akonam, our Superintendent of Public Works. Any comments or questions?
Just curious how we, how do we sell them?
At auction. So we'll set a minimum bid and-
Where do we do the auction?
We don't. We have a third party.
And where do they do it? At our yard or?
No, no, they do it online.
Oh, they do it online?
Yeah, they have a pretty large, it's a municipal auction house. They have a pretty good reach to, you know, people who subscribe.
Photos, specs, people bid in.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. 106, Colleen.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Village Clerk to notice a public hearing from Monday, July 10, 2017, 8:00 p.m. prevailing time, at Ada Wheeler Avenue, Pleasantville, New York, to hear comments as it pertains to a local law amending Chapter 179 Water, Article 7, Cross Connection Control Sections 179-67 through 179-72 as attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Joe, you had a proposed addition to the language of the-
Right, I gave it, I sent it by email, I gave it to Patty, I have it here, I can read it. Judy, we're just curious, did you already send this proposed local law to the publisher, to the newspapers for publication? Cross connection.
No, just the, just the local law, just the, just the public hearing. So, no, it has-
Not the public, not the local law. So we can, we can, so I added-
We can amend this language in the law itself.
In paragraph one, section 179-69, in the middle of it, adding where it says that the director can, shall determine the degree of hazard that a consumer facility poses to the district water system, and I added in, and if a consumer facility is determined to be a hazardous facility under the technical standards to be adopted in accordance with Section 179-70 of this chapter, he shall require that a suitable backflow preventer containment device be installed. So I wanted just to add that sentence. So if we can add that to the local law, and that'll be what is the subject of the public hearing, that'll be great.
Anyone have any comment or concern about that?
I think it's good.
Fine by me. So-
That's what we talked about the other night, right?
Right. I neglected to do it until today. That's, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, so the whole purpose of this is to make certain that we have proper valves in critical locations so that no polluted water or contaminated water gets back siphoned into the water supply. And Patty, Jeff Akonam had identified that we weren't aligned fully with the county requirements?
I think there's some expanded definitions now that he wanted to capture.
Right.
But we've been complying with the Health Department's-
Right.
...laws and regulations all along.
And we don't, at the moment, believe that this new local law would capture a lot of new-
Residential properties? No.
Right.
Well, that was one of the reasons, I, just so we're clear, I use the phrase hazardous facility, and it's determined to be a hazardous facility, which is one of the defined terms. So if it's determined to be that, then yes, he can order it. So if it's just a residence, you know, that was my purpose.
Usually, if there's a home occupation, that's usually where we see some risk.
Right, but if he's, if he determined it to be a hazardous, is a potential risk, then yes, he can order it.
All right, so a motion to approve the posting of the public hearing with the modestly amended local laws described by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 108, Joe.
107.
107, I'm having trouble with my numbers tonight.
You are. Whereas Toll Brothers posted a performance bond, 579800054, in the amount of $413,760 for the installation of village sanitary sewer and water utilities for the project entitled Enclave of Pleasantville, and whereas the remainder of the village-owned water and sanitary sewer utilities have been installed, and whereas the water and sanitary sewer utilities have been tested and approved by the Westchester County Department of Health, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees, based upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Public Works, hereby approves the reduction of Toll Brothers' performance bond, 579800054, to $103,440.
Is there a second?
Second.
And this is backed up by a memo from Jeff Akonam stating as such. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 108, Nicole. Oh, you got the big one.
All right. Whereas a project for the Manville Road Corridor improvements, pin 8761.83, here 24 referred to as the project, is eligible for funding under the title 23 U.S. Code as amended that calls for the apportionment of the costs such program to be borne at the ratio of 80% federal funds and 20% non-federal funds. And whereas the Village of Pleasantville desires to advance the project by making a commitment of 100% of the non-federal share of the costs of preliminary engineering and right-of-way incidentals. Now therefore, the Village of Pleasantville Board duly convened does hereby resolve that the Village Board hereby approves the above-subject project, and it is hereby further resolved that the Village Board hereby authorizes the Village of Pleasantville to pay in the first instance 100% of the federal and non-federal share of the cost of preliminary engineering and right-of-way incidentals work for the project or portions thereof. And it is further resolved that the sum of $76,000 is hereby appropriated from the capital account, the number is H5197.201/18492, and made available to cover the cost of participation in the above phase of the project. And it is further resolved that in the event the full federal and non-federal share costs of the project exceed the amount appropriated above, the Village of Pleasantville shall convene as soon as possible to appropriate said excess amount immediately upon the notification by the village administrator thereof. And it is further resolved that the administrator of the Village of Pleasantville be and is hereby authorized to execute all necessary agreements, certifications, or reimbursement requests for federal aid and/or applicable, how do you pronounce that?
Marcuselli.
Marcuselli aid on behalf of the Village of Pleasantville with the New York State Department of Transportation in connection with the advancement or approval of the project, and providing for the administration of the project and the municipality's first instance funding of the project costs and permanent funding of the local share of federal aid and state aid eligible project costs, and all project costs within appropriations therefore that are not so eligible. And it is further resolved that in addition to the village administrator, the following municipal titles, superintendent of public works, village engineer, village treasurer, are also hereby authorized to execute any necessary agreements or certifications on behalf of the municipality or sponsor with NYSDOT in connection with the advancement or approval of the project identified in the state-local agreement. And it is further resolved that a certified copy of this resolution be filed with the New York State Commissioner of Transportation by attaching it to any necessary agreement in connection with the project. And it is further resolved, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Is there a second?
Second.
Maybe that even deserves a third. So, this refers, as we have commented in the past, to this federal grant we have received through New York State DOT, a little more than $1.5 million. In the end, the village contribution will be in the neighborhood of $750,000.
Added on top of that.
Added on top of that for a project of around figures, about 2.25 million. It's, I think, a real game changer for us to fairly dramatically improve the streetscape and the pedestrian conditions along Manville Road, starting at Grant Street near the Burns Media Lab and marching all the way up Manville, past the Burns, and up to Tompkins Avenue in the area of the Shell Station. So, we'll devote a session, perhaps at our next meeting, to a presentation to the public about exactly what that all means. It's designs that have been developed some years back, and we've had stapled in the corner for a good long time. A few aspects of it will require some revision and revisiting now that we're actually at the point of doing it, but short version of a longer story is that anticipates a fairly substantial change in Memorial Plaza with a new pocket park yet to be developed at the north end where the war monuments are, closing that right-hand elbow out of the commuter side of the lot, and reorienting traffic from the commuter side of the lot back to the traffic light at Manville and Grant Street. That area gets revised to include a dedicated right-turn lane to facilitate the increased traffic, and it also presages the bumping out of curbs at intersections at Grant Street, at Wheeler, and at Washington, so that the crosswalks are substantially narrower, and in the case of the area over the bridge, removes a lane of traffic so that you no longer have pedestrian conflicts with, as many pedestrian conflicts as we currently have. And then lastly, it anticipates a planted median in two locations, one roughly opposite the flower basket on the Memorial Plaza side of the bridge, and the other, an extended planted median that is at the center of Manville Road, starting at about Crink King's Crown and heading up to Tompkins Avenue. So, we'll show drawings of that so our folks can have an idea of it. I am going to do a PC TV show for folks to get oriented, and there certainly is going to be plenty of opportunity for folks to weigh in if you have comments about what's anticipated, and especially interested in comments about the plans as they start to evolve for the park or plaza at the north end of Memorial Plaza, so.
Question. The resolution says it involves, this is our contribution toward the federal and non-federal shares, and then, but in the second whereas, it only refers to the non-federal share. Should that be, should it say federal and non-federal there in the second whereas?
Let's see. The Village of Pleasantville decides the non-federal share. You're talking about our commitment to 100%.
Our commitment is the non-federal share, right?
We're going to take on the federal share.
Right.
But then, in the resolution, it says we're paying in the first instance 100% of the federal and non-federal share, so something's got to change.
Of the cost of preliminary engineering.
Yes. That's the same thing.
It is the same thing. I don't know why they...
One says federal and non-federal, one says non-federal.
But is that a timing thing, Patty? We get reimbursed?
We're not going to get reimbursed for engineering if you're, that's why they had written this up specifically to require us to...
I don't know that it matters. It's in the whereas clause. I don't know that it matters. I'm just saying, I heard that, I went, "Oh, wait, that sounds different."
Yeah.
Basically, what this is saying is that, you know, there are, we have a 20% obligation on most items in the grant based on certain categories of expense, but for preliminary engineering, we're paying 100%.
So, we're not getting reimbursed, but this is a credit against our $750,000 contribution. This is part of it.
It is not.
It is not. This is over and above our $750,000 contribution.
We have a lot of those drawings already done.
Yes.
Do we need to have the federal, non-federal written in at all?
Well, they had asked us to adopt the resolution the way they had written it, so we just filled in.
So, this is their...
It is. It's their boilerplate.
All right. So, let's propose to accept...
All we did was put an account number in there.
That's fine.
We'll accept pending any clarification that may go on between Patty and the folks at NYSDOT. All in favor?
Aye.
I do have another question about the project generally, and our $750,000 contribution, how do you think, being our budgetary guru, we're going to pay for that? Are we bonding it? Are we going to pay cash for some of it and bond some of it? Or are we paying cash for all? Do we have that set aside? I don't think we did. I don't remember that much being set aside.
We have to talk about capital program generally, because we have several projects that we liked, but we held financing in abeyance until we knew whether or not this grant would come through.
Okay. So, we'll talk about it.
My impression is a bond. I think it's probably appropriate to bond it.
It's certainly appropriate. The question is, do we have some cash that we would want to spend on it? Or, I don't know the answer, so...
Right. So, we'll look at it in the context. And once we get our audit report, which should be coming out preliminarily in the next month, so we'll have a good sense of our fund balances, and then we'll look at it from there.
Okay.
And then we have, as you know, a bunch of other capital projects that are on the want and wish list, and now that we have this piece actually up and running, and know we have this 3/4 of a million commitment, that helps to clarify the picture.
Patty, how soon would we need to make that bonding decision? If we were to take that?
September.
Okay.
So, we should put it on the agenda, you know?
We'll have it on in August.
Fairly soon.
Because there's a window. We have to open up a window for referendum, and so, I would say, Mary and I are probably going to look at this in July, once we get our preliminary audit.
You need a referendum for this, Patty?
Well, for a borrowing resolution, we have to leave it open for permissive referendum, so there's a window. So, I'm suggesting, like, if we can get this before you in August, at least the fiscal plan, and if you like it, then September, we put out the bond notice and then see if there's any objection to it. But we need to work on this this summer. Once we get our audited report, we'll be able to tell you what we should be doing.
All right, any further, any new business? Just a report, we met in work session before this meeting with the owner and eventual developer of a project at 199 Tompkins Avenue. That is the low industrial building that's at the corner of Markling Avenue and Tompkins. And there'll be some ongoing discussion about his redevelopment proposals for that property, so anyone who lives in that neighborhood or has concerns about that ought to pay attention. And again, I remind everybody that it's a good idea to sign up for our agendas. You get them automatically in your email, pleasantville-n-y.gov. Subscribe to news. And then, lastly, we also had a conversation, which continues a previous conversation, and will go on for a while, about community engagement, communications, and social media, with the board clearly recognizing that we have some work to do and are looking to put in place the parameters to ramp up our communication program and have a social media presence, and likely in the end, add some sort of staff support for that. So, any comments on any of that as it develops would be welcome. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. See you in two weeks. And sign up for the music festival. Get your tickets, pleasantvilmusicfestival.com. Thanks.